I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the March 10, 2025, meeting of the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission. I am Vice Chair Brian Laster, and I will be conducting this meeting in the absence of our Chair, who I trust is enjoying a well-deserved spring break. So the first item on our agenda is the approval of the February 10, 2025, meeting minutes. Would anyone like to entertain a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? So Emily, do you have any announcements?
So the first one is that we will have a regularly scheduled DRC meeting, and it'll be next Monday, March 17, and it'll start at 4:00 PM here at Eastern Flank Event Facility. The next one is that we will have the Preservation Plan Community Meeting, and it will be held on March 26 from 6:00 to 8:00 here at the Eastern Flank Event Facility. Our third announcement is that a special DRC has been scheduled on March 27 from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM to meet for a focus group discussion with look... And the last staff announcement is that the Annual Historic Zoning Commissioner Training is scheduled for Monday, March 31 from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and lunch will be provided for the Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Now is the time for citizens to be heard on any issue or concern. If you would like to speak on a specific item on the agenda, it's best to wait until the citizen comment period for that item. So for all citizen comments, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the staff. Come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to two minutes. So are there any citizens who would like to speak to the commission at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And this is going to be item number two. This is a consideration of demolition to an accessory, alterations to the principal structure, site alterations, and fencing at 116 Lewisburg Avenue. And Elizabeth, I believe you have the comments on this one.
Yes, thank you. So 116 Lewisburg Avenue is a circa 1929 Tudor Revival that is contributing to the Lewisburg Avenue National Register Historic District. It is a one-and-a-half-story house that is stone veneered with a high-pitched side-gabled roof that features stucco on the side gable ends. A large frame addition, including the garage extending from the rear of the building, was added in 1988. There are several items included within this application, including the demolition of a circa 1986 greenhouse, which is considered a nonhistoric accessory structure, alterations to the principal building, site alterations, and rear yard fencing. So as proposed, the replacement of the two... The alterations are appropriate. The replacement of the two rear-facing windows and the reduction of size of one of the replacements... The windows will remain casement windows. Specifications have not been included within this application, but should be consistent with the recommendations of the guidelines. The replacement of the pedestrian door in the rear, the rear deck replacement and expansion, the installation of two light fixtures in the rear, installation of two light fixtures at the front, and removal of the front awning are all appropriate and align with the guidelines. Within this application, it is also proposed to paint the previously painted materials, such as the siding, trim, gutters, which were all previously painted. These elements are proposed to be painted in a neutral color. While the Historic Zoning Commission does not review paint color selection, the guidelines do recommend using paint colors and schemes typical of the age and style of the building. Neutral hues, such as creams, browns, and whites, are typical to the Tudor style and are appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition of the accessory structure, building alterations, site alterations, and fencing with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So do we have the applicant here with us today? Yes, could you please come up to the lectern? Make sure you speak into the microphone, the lectern here.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yes. Thank you.
And then please state your name and address for the record.
Amy Atkins. Of me, subject property is 116 Lewisburg Avenue, Franklin.
And would you like to expound on anything staff has already shared with us about your project?
I don't think so. I think we covered a lot of it last time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. So are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? All right, well, seeing none, would anyone on the committee entertain... Like to entertain a motion?
I move to approve with staff conditions one through five or four? A second. It is one through four.
Okay. And Holly, second? All right, any discussion?
I know last time when you came, we were looking at some... This shot in the backyard where the lattice screen, and we asked you to give us some heights on that. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yes.
And what you propose?
Apologies. I tried really hard to get a rendering, but with only four days between the meeting and submitting, I just wasn't able to. But if you look at the current highest point of the lattice, my proposal is not to actually have any lattice or wall extend past that highest point. I'm just looking to extend the highest point. It's kind of hard to see, yes. And then to that point, and then the stair step down would be straight across again with the lattice extending just to the edge of that rock wall.
No, I think it reads really well. Thank you. Appreciate your handiness on that one.
I tried.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so moving right along, item number three, consideration of alterations to the principal and addition to an accessory at 1009 Fair Street. And Elizabeth, I believe this one's yours as well.
Yes, thank you. So 1009 Fair Street is a circa 1920s Craftsman bungalow located in the Hensyville National Historic Register District. The building has come to DRC, had site visits, and came to the Historic Zoning Commission throughout the duration of the restoration of the building. Most recently, on October of 2024, the reconstruction of the accessory structure and the raising of the roof on the principal building were approved. Three items are included within this application. The first is a change in materials in the gable ends from lap siding to cedar shake. A sixty... The second item is a 64-square-foot addition to the accessory structure. And the third item is a driveway alteration to straighten the driveway to the street. So as proposed, the alterations align with the guidelines, and staff recommends approval of the cedar shingle addition to the accessory structure and alteration to the driveway with conditions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Would the applicants please approach the lectern? And speaking of the microphone, if you would, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ben McCrery, Chisel Workshop.
Anything you'd like to add?
I do not. I appreciate staff's excellent analysis and recommendations, so nothing to add, but happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Do we have a motion from the committee? Kathy?
I'll motion to approve with staff's conditions.
I'll second.
All right, Bob, I've got you for a second. So discussion? Any discussion on the proposed alterations? I did have just one. I know it was one that staff brought up and part of what... It had to do with the use of the building. Would it stay like its garage use, or would it be used for dwelling?
I think it could be either or. I think the intention is to have the flexibility to be both.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, because... And... All right. All right, so moving on to item number four. This is the consideration of signage, awning, and lighting installation at 94 East Main Street. And Elizabeth, you have this one.
Yes, thank you. So 94 East Main Street is part of a set of combined buildings located in the gateway to the downtown Franklin Historic District. The facades are composed of a replicated historic gas station, a frame building, and one false-front facade building. This application pertains to the middle frame building facade and the right false-front building facade, and three items are included in this application for consideration. The first is signage, which includes wall, windows, and flag. The second is awning installation, and the third is light fixtures. So we'll begin with the signage. For the false-front building, four signs are proposed, three separate window signs and a wall sign. For the wall sign, one wall sign is proposed to be installed on the parapet of the false-front building. The proposed sign is 14.75 square feet. The signage will be that black pen lettering on the white building, and the height from grade is 16 feet. Three window signs are proposed on this building facade, one on each window flanking the entrance, and on one window sign grouping area featuring the front entrance and the transom window. The proposed signage equates to 15% of the center window grouping area and about 1% of the flanking windows on each side. The guidelines recommend to use traditional sign placement to enhance architectural elements of the facade. A commercial building should have no more than three signs unless it has more than one ground-floor retail storefront tenant space. Wall sign size is limited to nine square feet and to be proportionate to the building facade and other signage. Wall sign height from grade has a maximum of 12 feet from grade. Window sign must be fully placed within the interior of the building and attached directly to or mounted within 12 inches of the inside of the business. The proposed quantity of signs exceeds the recommended three signs per commercial building. The proposed wall sign exceeds the recommended sign area maximum and is located at a height more than the recommended 12 feet from grade. The previous signs for this building have been located in this location since 2011. The zoning ordinance does permit wall signs to be located on the parapet of a building and to have a sign area maximum that is one square foot per square... Per linear foot of the building facade. The proposed signage meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance but not the recommendations of the guidelines. Now moving on to the frame middle building, three signs are proposed for the frame building facade, two window signs and a flag sign. Two separate window signs are proposed on this building, and the window area for these windows was not provided, and the window area coverage cannot be calculated. One flag sign is proposed on the front of the frame building to be hung from a post of the porch. The dimensions of the flag are unknown, and the flag appears to utilize a darker background, but the lettering color is unknown. The guidelines recommend the following for these signs: that window signs must be fully within the interior of the building; window sign area maximum is 15% of an individual window or window grouping area; and flag signs are not a sign type in the design guidelines. The guidelines and zoning ordinance maintain the same standard for window area coverage so that the signage does not exceed 15% of the window or window grouping area. This calculation has not been provided at this time, and flags are not a listed sign type in the guidelines, so the zoning ordinance regulates them. Now we can move on to the other alterations, which includes a new shed awning, which is proposed to be installed on the false-front building facade. Earlier this year, the previous awning fell during a weather event, and the proposed awning will be 39 feet by eight-and-a-half feet and fit proportionately over the storefront windows. The awning will maintain a 10-foot, 2-inch clearing to grade, and the proposed awning will utilize an aluminum frame, fabric material, and acrylic fabric, and steel post. The proposed awning will be in a green color with cream piping detailing. The guidelines recommend the following: to design awnings to have between a 30- and 50-degree angle, taking into consideration the height of the storefront and snow and wind load requirements. The awning fabric must cover the front of the awning frame, and to select colors to enhance and complement the building and adjacent buildings. The angle of the proposed awning is unclear. The proposed green should be a muted color that complements the building, and a sample of the material in this proposed green color would need to be provided to staff for approver... For approval prior to installation. The use of steel post is not a common feature in the awnings in the downtown district, however, due to the failure of the previous awning, the applicants would like to ensure the safety and stability of the new awning. The proposed size, fit, color, and design of the awning are all appropriate. For the lighting, some new light fixtures are proposed to be installed on the false-front facade building. The replacement of the lighting has been previously approved by the commission with conditions of approval to submit specifications to staff. The proposed gooseneck lighting and lantern named K1 are appropriate. Staff requested the applicant submit the design of Lantern K for review by the commission. The proposed K lanterns are to flank the front entrance, are in our 21.8 inches long by seven inches wide each. The submitted K1 lantern is 12 and a half inches by seven inches, and all light fixtures will utilize a matte black finish. The guidelines recommend the following: to design light fixtures and their placement to be compatible with and subordinate to historic buildings and their surrounding historic So the proposed K lanterns for the front of the building are simple, however, the scale and design of the fixture in comparison to the historic building and what is traditionally seen on... Is inconsistent with what is commonly seen on historic commercial buildings. The use of oblong fixtures is seen nearby on Harpeth Square and on the First and Main Development. The utilization of the K1 lantern style aligns with the recommendation of the guidelines and is appropriate. However, the use of the proposed K lantern is not appropriate. Staff recommends denial of the proposed lighting in the front of the building in the K-style lantern based on the following grounds: to design light fixtures and their placement to be compatible with and subordinate to historic buildings in their surrounding historic district. If new light fixtures are necessary, use concealed lighting or fixtures that are simple in character but compatible with the placement, design, scale, materials, and quality of lighting on adjacent historic buildings. To use the smallest possible fixtures hidden underneath cornices and parapets to minimize visual impacts to the extent feasible, and orient illumination downward for commercial and civic buildings. Staff recommends approval of the proposed signage, awning, gooseneck, and rear lighting with the following conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Aubrey, could you please come to the lectern and tell us your name and address?
Thank you so much for that summary, Elizabeth. Hi, I'm Aubrey Olaski from 94 East Main Street.
Okay, do you have any comments to add to what we've heard already?
I would love to provide some samples of the awning, because in the photo, that is quite bright green that our graphic designer brought up, so if I can, I could present that now?
Sure.
Okay. We haven't decided on what... I went to Nashville Tent and Awning Company, so there's two different colors. One, they're the same color, one striped and one's not. We're leaning towards the solid color, but this is a much more muted green, hoping for approval.
Okay.
Are there any questions I can answer?
Well, let me first ask if there are any citizens who would like to comment on this application. So seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion, but I'd like to actually do this in parts. So the first part, let's take, would be the signage. So would I have a motion from the floor on signage?
Move to approve with staff conditions.
All right, so any discussion?
I'm definitely leaning to the one that's not striped.
Yes.
The awning that's not.
Well, we're currently on the... On signage.
Oh, signage, okay.
So at this point, because we've broken it up into three parts.
Okay, gotcha.
So currently, we're assigning a signage, so we have the proposed signage at 14.75 square feet. The guidelines say nine square feet, and then you see the position of it actually on the building on the parapet. So I think that's part of what we're considering, first of all. Kathy?
The first one of staff's comments is that the proposed signage must be limited to three signs per building. So for the false-front facade, one side must be removed... One sign must be removed. Which one would you like to remove?
Yeah, I would love to explain the window signage, because we are open. That's gold leaf, so we were going to... If you see in the windows where the sign says "perenn," and I'd also would love some clarity on what signage means. If it's just saying "perenn," or is it any type of emblem, such as what's on the front door?
It's any type of wording, signage, or signage shapes, anything that relates to the message of the business and communicates that.
Okay, so all of what you see is in black will be in gold leaf. So the perenn on the top is obviously our main priority. I know that there was a flag suggested. I think that it wasn't included, but we have a small logo. It's a little rabbit that is waving a perenn flag, and that's what that was going to be in, in the cream color on a green, similar color. That's also the least priority. The main priority is the gold leafing on our windows, and then the top sign.
And currently... Go ahead, Holly.
The top sign is in black, though?
It's a black steel, yes.
And currently, our guidelines and I think the zoning ordinance both don't speak to flags, so it's not something we even consider, the flag.
That's what I find. There was a flag holder on the building originally when we moved in, so we assumed that there must have been probably some type of flag, maybe, and it was just an American flag.
So any other discussion on the actual position of the letters on the parapet or its size?
Well, I have a couple of questions for staff. So the top sign is shown in green, but she said it's going to be black metal. Did you say since the previous sign that was there was about the same square feet?
It appears to be consistent and aligned with the lighting that is shown in the diagrams. I believe, when reviewed previously, did exceed nine square feet as well.
Okay, and then the two window signs, would that be considered two separate signs?
Yes, so we had to request definition from our zoning administrator for the window grouping areas, so the two windows to the side of this entrance shown on the screen are considered individual window signs. So there's two of those, and then the window, the transom and the main entrance are grouped as one window sign as well. So there's three window signs in this application and one wall sign for this building front.
Got it. So can I have clarification to staff's recommendation? Which... There still needs to be one sign that must be removed, correct?
Yes, the guidelines do recommend that a maximum of three signs are permitted for a building front, but the zoning ordinance does not limit the sign quantity.
So the applicant has one on the wall, the false facade, the perenn, and then three on the pair of windows flanking the entry?
Two flank the entrance and one entrance. So there's going to be the signage on the window here on the screen, and then two small...
Oh, that's a window.
Yes, that's considered a window.
Okay. So staff, are you saying the transom would be the one that would be removed?
That would be up to the applicant. We didn't note which sign would be removed. We just noted that it would be limited to a maximum of three.
I'm just deducing about what we were talking about, the gold ones and then the one...
Yeah, if they were to remove the ones on the transom, that still wouldn't be sufficient, because the window area grouping is considered the transom and the door entrance.
So technically, we have four signs total. We have the flag, the top one, the gold ones in the windows, and then the transom.
So the flag is actually on a different building facade, so it's considered its own building and gets three signs on that portion of the building, too. So this one is only for the three window signs here and the wall sign.
So I guess my question still stands. Which sign goes?
I... You'll have to forgive me, this is my first time with a building that has such regulations for the gold leafing on the windows. We would love to keep the sign above, obviously, as the top one. I would say we could remove the perenn on the windows, but the information stating what we are, the bakery, restaurant, venmoastery, and the hours of operation would be... I would like to keep those, along with the two door emblems.
So you're suggesting a removal of the words bakery?
No, the perenn on the bottom left of that window and the window to the right.
So removing both of those?
If that's what I have to do, yes.
And that would work for staff's recommendations, item number one?
Yes, that would reduce it to less than the recommended maximum of three.
So just for clarification, sorry, can I add another one then, or can I keep one of them?
Yes, if you wanted to keep... If you wanted to have a maximum of three signs, you could. If you removed one of the window signs, that would resolve the issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for clarification, and do we need to make an amendment for this? Was this something that staff can handle as far as the applicant, from what we say here today, that one of those perenn signs are going to go away?
So as of right now, the motion on the floor is we're approving the signage with staff conditions, and so staff, if you would clarify what those conditions are?
Yes, so the conditions as relating to the signs. The proposed signage must be limited to three signs per building facade. For the false-front building facade, one sign must be removed. Second condition is that the wall sign on the false-front building facade must be reduced to nine square feet in area and installed no higher than 12 feet from grade. That the window sign area coverage must not exceed 15% of the individual window or determined window grouping area per the zoning ordinance, and that all window signage must be applied fully within the interior of the building.
So then basically, it's covered within the motion, and staff recommendation, you just choose which three you want.
Okay.
So any further discussion on the signage? So the motion on the floor is to approve with staff conditions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So now, let's move on to the second part of the application. So we'll get to this awning, and so that is to the awning. So do I have... Anyone would like to entertain a motion on the awning?
I'll propose a motion that we recommend the awning as proposed, but in the solid green.
So just to be clear, you're recommending approval? We don't... Well, this body doesn't recommend. I apologize. So you're moving to approve the awning with the green as presented?
In solid green. And that's the color that's presented to us at the meeting. And do I have a second? Thank you, Madeline. So do we have any discussion?
Now, would the... Would the awning still have the cream piping?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you go back to the slide with some of the dimensions and the columns in on it, on the awning?
I'm also happy to answer questions regarding it, of why the columns are there.
That's okay. How far projected from the facade of the building does the awning and the columns come?
The columns would touch the... If you can see the edge of where the patio is, it would be up against it.
That's the raised portion of the patio?
Yes.
That stepped area?
So what happened with this building when they did the assessment after it fell due to the snowfall we had a few months ago, or a couple months ago? There was a fabric awning installed in 2011, I believe, when it was a bakery. That was removed. The fabric was removed, and instead of fabric, they replaced it with metal without adding any proper backing or structural integrity, which caused it to fall. When we had Nashville Tent come and assess replacing the awning, they suggested that in order to cover the patio portion or the raised portion of that area with the expansion, to replace the exact expansion of the awning that had fallen, would be good to add the columns. columns.
Do you note just offhand the dimensions of the columns? I mean, are they four by four?
So they actually just, they put in standard steel posts, and then they said a lot of people add a little bit of, you know, structure around it to make it more appealing to the eye. So some type of wood. We would not want to make this a large aesthetic part of the building, probably match the white cream color that we are painting the building to make sure that it doesn't stand out too much.
So the proposal, then, you would have four metal posts, and then they would have a surround of wood?
Yes.
In this configuration that we're seeing?
Yes.
Okay.
And you said the columns would land just after that raised patio or on to the raised patio?
Just after it.
Okay.
I would like to see if, are you using a company to do this awning?
Nashville Awning and Tent Company, yes.
I think it would benefit if it needs to just go to staff, but to have a drawing from them, basically just to prove the item number five that staff brings out about the 30 to 50 degree angle. It's a little misleading to understand that angle from the drawing that's there, the representation of it.
This was a drawing that they sent to us with the dimensions. That's what the signature at the bottom is.
Okay, I'm talking about not a photographic-generated one, but an actually drafted one. And it would show the width of the wrapping of the wood around the column, so we'd see a dimension on the column as well. So it would be more of an architectural drawing instead of a perspective thing with photoshopped in the awning on it.
I agree, because now that we're adding in the posts and the columns, to his point, what size are the columns? What's that angle?
Just because I would love to move this along, what if we removed the columns and made the awning smaller and not, and didn't have the posts?
For me, it's not just about the columns, it's the whole thing, how much projection. And then the angle, you know, there's a reason why it's not that much, because it encroaches on the impediment, the facade of the building. And so whatever that angle is, is going to increase how much it eats up the facade of the building. And I don't want to take away from that facade and see all awning. I want to see more of the building. So that angle, to me, is critical to see what that looks like.
So the awning that we are replacing was going to replace the exact location of the existing awning. He was just going to add in the structural elements of the columns to make it more structurally sound.
He should be able to do a quick drawing, if he's got existing, I would think. It just seems like it needs to be more, it's a big impact, it's one of the first buildings. It is the first building we see as we come down that main strip from down Franklin Road. So I think that would be critical to see that drawn up a little bit more technically.
So Kathy, would you like to move to defer this, this portion?
I think staff has outlined what needs to be done as far as this angle is. And I think if our applicant would just get that drawing and then present it to staff, I think staff would be able to either make a decision.
Okay.
So I don't want to defer it, no.
All right, any other discussion?
Can I just, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think it would look better without the columns. So is there a way to just make it something that's a little bit smaller with, that's sound, structurally sound?
What we were trying to do, because we weren't anticipating it falling down, we were just going to put the exact awning, but in a material, so it wasn't so heavy, back up. But when he came out and looked at the way that it was put onto the building, he said that the span of the existing awning that was already on the building at the height of exactly how we wanted to replace it was not structurally sound. So it would be at the same exact height as the other awning. What we could do is just make it shorter, so it wouldn't span so far into the patio space.
Yeah, I think maybe if you could come up with one option that doesn't have the columns, as big as you can make it with still being structural, and then just an example of what the, or what I guess what Kathy's asking for, where we can just see what the columns look like?
Sure.
You know, so like the actual look of them. Even if you couldn't get like a full-on rendering of it, at least having some example of what it would actually look like, clay and wood, I think would be really helpful.
Okay.
And what I'm hearing is a lot of DRC.
Well, but...
So that's what I want to make sure that, because just getting drawings back to staff, I mean, we're not really making a decision about columns or angles or the width of the awning. So, I mean, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to reiterate something because I'm wondering if that's even all necessary. So you're saying the previous awning was 39, and how far it came out is going to be the exact same?
Mm-hmm.
So then, the new awning should match the exact same angle as the previous one, which then my only thing is the columns. It's like really, because we can't tell from this picture, are they going to be six by six boards that wrap around, four by four?
I personally would love to not put the columns in.
Uh-huh.
The only reason that I was going with the recommendation is because they've done this for so long. And he said to cover the span and make sure this never happens again, falling down, it would be great to make it more structural.
Like you're also saying if you remove the columns, you may need to shrink the span of the awning?
By a couple of feet, yes, inward. So what the awning did is it covers that whole patio.
Right.
So we were thinking it would be nice to continue to cover the whole patio, so it's shaded for customers because that's a nice spot where everyone will be walking through. And I'm sure you know the previous thing that we're doing is adding the ramp. So we were just thinking we can make it a little bit more structural. But it is replacing the exact same location as far as height and span. But we could bring the span back a little bit more and then remove the columns.
Yeah, I don't think the columns are really all that consistent with the architecture of the building itself. You know, it just seems like an interruption to the...
Then we shall remove them. We will not have them.
That's just...
But I also get like if she removes them and has to shorten the span of that awning, right now, it's covering the entire patio and it's symmetrical over the windows and the main door. So then, it'd be like, where does it stop on the ends? Is it just over the main door at that point, you know?
So since...
I'm sorry, I might be using...
Excuse me for a second. Since we're talking, we're getting more into DRC. So since we're talking about this, and I don't see a deferral, as part of the application, we have the four columns. If the board decides not to have the four columns, do we need an amendment for that?
Yes, yes, you would.
So do I have anyone who would like to pose an amendment to the motion?
I'll propose an amendment to the motion that the awning be installed with a, without the columns. And in terms of the depth of the awning, whatever the applicant feels is, is, you know, is going to meet the structural necessities.
So maybe what was previously there?
Or less. Because from what I understand from the applicant, it was the span of the awning that might have caused the collapse.
The depth, yeah.
Yeah, the depth of the awning that might have caused the collapse. And then you mentioned shortening it a little bit, right?
Yes, that's what I meant, the width of it, not the length of it. So it was maintain the length of the building exactly how it was, it just might be brought in a little bit shorter. It might not need to be brought in that much shorter with it being fabric and not a metal roof on a fabric awning structure.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
Give me a second. And a second.
All right, so I currently have an amendment to the motion that the awning should be installed without the columns and that its depth should either replace what is existing or be less. All right, everyone ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so now we have an amendment to the motion, and we're going back to the main motion, which is to approve the awning with staff conditions with the amendment now that the columns are removed and the depth is set what it was previously or less. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Now we move on to lighting. And we've heard staff comments on lighting. So Aubrey, anything would you like to add to the comments we've already heard about lighting?
I was reviewing the two options. I just wanted to get clarification on the size of, I believe it was K, not K1. The current lighting on the building is about four inches larger than this specific light. So I guess there was a question there of why this would be denied if the existing lighting is larger.
Okay, so let's, before we have the discussion, do we have a motion on the floor for lighting?
I'll make a motion to approve the lighting as presented. And the reason I'm going against staff is because it appears to be a replacement in kind to a certain degree, and also it appears to be consistent with the architectural style of the building.
And so that is the style K and not K1?
Correct.
And that's what you, for your motion?
Yeah.
And do I have a second to Lisa's motion to approve as presented by the applicant the style K?
I second.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, discussion.
I think the lantern, the K version is just a little slightly more modern than a, it's a traditional, really a traditional lantern that's a little bit more modern in the shape. And I think because the proportions are good with the building and the size is fine, I think it's a good, an appropriate choice.
Thank you.
And what's shown currently in the photograph is K and not K1 of what we're seeing on the screen.
I would like to add, I understand why staff denied it, because it is more stylized, this elongated form, but I would support it because the placement of it is very, very narrow, that little strip of wall. And so I feel there's enough wall behind it to make it look like it's not too wide. So I think if you went with one that was more historically correct, it would feel too massive for the application of where it's going. So even though it was denied because of that elongated shape, non-historical, this works for this particular location right there on that building.
Thank you.
Lighting is tough. And I do appreciate, when you zoomed in on it, the glass on it's very pretty. What is the type of lamp? Is it a continuous lamp or is it a gas flickery looking lamp?
No, just a continuous. I think that if it's gas, it should stay real gas, but this will just be a continuous light.
Okay, good. There it is. So it's somewhat of a modified Edison lamp, which is not, not the curly, it's not too industrial looking.
No.
So it works again with being this kind of a transition type, but it, I do love the little hat on it. That is a nice historical nod.
Thank you.
And I would say light bulbs are subject to change over time.
Definitely.
I don't know, sometimes those fixtures are pretty big, so I would order extra little light bulbs.
I definitely understand staff's comments on this, but you know, both are basically the same style. One is just more elongated than the other. I think that is a good point about the wall, where it is located. I kind of like, I kind of think that the backer plate on it actually adds something to its, that complements that historic building. So are we ready to vote? So the motion currently is to approve fixture K as presented by the applicant, which goes against staff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Aubrey, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, so we're moving on to item number five, and this is a consideration of an addition to a principal building at 713 Glass Lane. And Emily, we'll get to hear from you about it tonight.
Yes, so the principal building located at 713 Glass Lane is a part of the Boyd Mill Avenue Historic District. The building was constructed in 2007 and would be considered a nonhistoric building within the district. So here's a kind of look of the rear of the building. Here's another shot, even closer one. So the proposal is to add a 484 square foot addition to the rear of the building and will serve as a conservatory or a sun porch. The addition is situated so that the addition will not be visible from Glass Lane. The addition will mainly consist of large windows with corner boards that will wrap on the corners of the addition and between the window and door panels. It is unclear if the application intends to utilize an accordion window or door configuration on the rear of the building, but it would be appropriate to utilize this element as it is on the rear of a nonhistoric building. The guidelines recommend the following: that one should use roof materials compatible with the district such as asphalt, wood, stone, slate, fiberglass, shingles, or staining C metal. One should design new windows and new window openings to be compatible with the surrounding historic buildings. The proposed rear addition mostly meets the intent of the guidelines except for the utilization of a rubber membrane roofing material. However, this roof is tucked behind the main form of the building and will not be seen from Glass Lane. Additionally, the window specifications have not been provided as a part of this application and will need to be provided to preservation staff prior to permitting. The proposed addition is appropriate within the guidelines and therefore staff recommends approval of the rear addition with conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Emily. Jay, could you please come to the lecture? Say your, your name and address for the record.
Jay Sheridan, 713 Glass Lane. And Michael Kasegas is here with us as well, architect, if you have technical questions.
Okay, excellent. Do you have anything to add to staff comments?
I don't think so. I thought we'd given some window specifications. We're exploring the accordions. They're very expensive, but I think we may end up with accordion, so, but obviously we would, you know, work with Emily on that.
Okay, excellent. So are there any citizens who wish to comment on the application? So seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion from the board.
I'll do a motion to approve with staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion?
I have a comment. Tell me why you picked that roof?
The membrane? I think it was probably Michael's recommendation. I mean, it's not visible. It won't be visible even from the, if you're standing underneath it.
I'm just curious, is structural waterproofing is that?
I would assume it's because of the pitch, and that typically when membranes are used, like a low pitch.
Jay, what is your pitch on that roof?
I have no idea. This is, which one was it?
One over 12.
That's pretty low, but...
So the...
I've usually seen it on flat roofs, but...
Yeah, well, but we're talking about, it's not 112 on the, on the roof, is it? Okay.
And that's where the rubber membrane will go?
Right.
I was just curious why that choice and not a choice that we typically use and as recommended by the guidelines.
Yeah.
That's all.
I don't know that we've, yeah, please.
It's, it's, it's not denied, but you know, because like you said, it's in the back.
And your address?
Michael Kasekis, 3001 Farmhouse Drive, Franklin. It's a, a low pitch roof. Shingles cannot be installed in a low slope, lower than three twelve pitch roof. So the options are standing C metal roof or a rubber. It's called a TPO, which is welded rubber roof.
But this cannot be seen from the street. It's totally in the rear of the building.
Yeah, I was just curious why you picked that. So I, I understand. And I think also too, as far as flashings and all those, you said it's welded?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Rubber membrane is welded.
Nice.
It's flashed over the walls.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, ready to vote? So the motion is to approve with staff comments. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right. So moving right along to our last item on the agenda for this evening is item number six. Consideration of front yard fencing alterations and an addition to an accessory at 240 Fourth Avenue South. And Emily, can I, we have you again.
Yes. So the National Register defines the principal building as a one-story bungalow influenced dwelling built in the 1920s. The accessory structure is a one bay garage that was built in 1925 with a gable front roof, weatherboard siding, and an original side hinge double doors made of vertical wood board. Both the principal building and accessory structure contribute to the district. Within this application, there are several proposals. First is the front yard fencing, the driveway extension, the relocation of the existing accessory structure in addition to the existing accessory structure. So first we'll start with the front yard fencing. It is proposed that a three-foot tall wood picket fence is proposed around the perimeter of the front yard. The design guidelines recommend that fences be designed to be compatible with the architectural style of the building, limit height to three feet, and differentiate the gate design materials or detailing from the associated fence or wall design. The proposed front yard fencing meets the intent of the guidelines, but the proposed design of the gate has not been provided. It will need to be differentiated from the proposed fencing. So let me scroll back to the overall site plan. Here we go. So it is proposed to add a portion of the new driveway to the existing driveway. The driveway addition is tucked behind the principal building and will not be highly visible from the street. As proposed, the driveway alteration is appropriate within the guidelines. So for the relocation of the accessory structure, the existing accessory structure is located to the left, in the left corner of the property. It is proposed to shift the structure nearly 12 feet forward so the building will be situated closer to the principal building. The design guidelines highly discourage relocation of, of historic accessory structures. DRC members were supportive of shifting the historic structure thus so that it will remain on the site and it will be a subtle shift so that it will appear the same from the street. As for the accessory structure addition, the, the existing wood frame accessory structure is 201.44 square feet. It is proposed to add 456 square feet, foot addition to the structure to equate the structure that will measure 657.77 square feet. The addition will wrap behind the existing structure and to the right of the structure. The addition will utilize wood or composite lap siding that will match the reveal of the existing accessory structure and the asphalt roofing material will match the existing roofing material. The addition will utilize insetts, offsets, and a change in roof pitch to define the addition from the existing structure. The front elevation utilizes two carriage-style segmented garage doors with simple lighting above each door. The guidelines recommend the following. One should preserve and maintain historic accessory structures. One should design alterations and additions so that the entirety of the accessory structure is compatible and visually subordinate in size, mass, and height to the accessory structure that they support, but in no case should they exceed one and a half stories. One should design the massing scale and proportions to be subordinate to the historic building. One should design the addition so that it has a lower scale and height than the historic building. The appearance of height should be designed to be minimized from adjacent properties. One should use windows with historic profiles and dimensions with a double hung appearance. While the addition does utilize insetts, offsets, and roof breaks and similar roof form elements as the principal building, the height of the addition is not subordinate to the historic accessory building according to the guidelines. When the application came before the DRC, DRC members supported the relocation in addition to the accessory structure. Window specifications have not been provided as part of the application and this will need to be sent to the preservation planning staff prior to permitting. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the relocation and addition of the accessory structure based on the following grounds. That one should maintain original locations of historic, historic accessory structures. That the design, one should design alterations in addition so that the entirety of the accessory structure is compatible and visually subordinate in size, mass, and height to the principal building they support, but in no case should they exceed one and a half stories. Should the Historic Zoning Commission approve the relocation and the addition of the accessory structure, there are several conditions recommended such as the window specifications. And therefore staff recommends approval of the front yard fencing and driveway alteration with conditions. Thank you.
So would the applicant please come forward and once again state your name and address for the record?
I'm Ben McCrery, Chisel Workshop.
Thank you. Ben, would you like to add any comments to the discussion?
I would like to request that the commission consider approval based on kind of, even though staff has recommended his approval of the size and shape of the garage building, that they would take into account that we've tried to minimize the size of it. Basically, even though we've expanded it, we've tried to keep it as small as possible. It is still much smaller in scale compared to any adjacent structures near it, especially the adjacent garage. I know that's not necessarily precedent for that, but I just want to, that's part of the scope of it all. And we are still smaller than the main house. So even though the addition bumps up slightly larger than the, the existing accessory structure, we've tried to keep it very compatible with the neighborhood and the surrounding properties.
All right. Thank you. So are there any citizens who would like to make a comment on this application? Well, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion from the board.
Can we break this one into chunks to you?
We can break it into chunks. That's fine. So would you like to start with fencing? All right. So I have a motion as regards to fencing.
I move to approve the fencing as proposed.
With staff comments?
With staff comments.
Thank you, Madeline. I mean, I'm sorry, Holly. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy.
You guys said that the fence that is going to be used has not been presented to you yet, or the gate?
It's just the gate design. So kind of like, it can have like just differentiated. So like sometimes you see fences and it'll have like a diagonal kind of like design on it. It could be something simple like that, just so it's differentiated. And that's just a guideline in our, it's just a recommendation.
Okay.
And is that something that staff feels comfortable approving or would it have to come back to us?
I mean, it's a minor change that we could, you know, approve.
So are you all right, Holly, then, by approving with staff comments and the gate comes back to staff?
Yep.
And Kathy for the second? All right. Any other discussion on fencing? Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion to approve with staff comments with the gate coming back to staff for approval, say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. So second is the accessory structure.
It would be the driveway alterations, or you could do it, the accessory structure moving. It's up to you.
Let's go with the accessory structure now, get the hard one out of the way, and then we'll come back to the drive. So do I have a, a motion regarding the accessory structure?
I move to approve it as presented with, contrary to staff, but with their concession if it is approved.
Okay. Would you like to tell us why you're going against staff's recommendation?
Yeah, I, I think that this is a very appropriate way to actually reuse the accessory structure and also meet the needs. So I think, I think this, this is a really good way of using the, mimicking the original architecture while also reusing the accessory structure that's there, so.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Kathy.
I'd also like to add to it as well, too, is it is somewhat of a challenging site. And I think applicant has done a good job of hiding it as best as he can behind the existing structure, even though it is maybe a little more massive then, but it has been reduced prior when we saw it in DRC to a smaller scale and placement. So I commend that on it and I would support it for that reason.
I would say for me, I would support the motion as well. But, and I, I, one of the things about these accessory structures, I, I do agree with the guidelines. You, you should not move accessory structures. But I think most of the time when that, that opposition comes from me is people actually want to get them out of the way. They're actually trying to put them on another piece of the property. This is actually doing something to utilize it for something that can be used as a garage. And, and the height, it is a little unusual having the addition actually go above the original accessory structure. But overall, in the spirit of the guidelines, it does not exceed the principal structure. And far from it, it's far superior, it's far subordinate to it. So that, that makes me lean towards, towards approval of this application too. Any other discussion?
I have one question. The doors that are shown on the front elevation of the accessory structure, are those the actual doors that are going to be used?
That's the intent, yes.
All right. Ready to vote? All in favor of approving the application with staff comments, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So now to the driveway. Do I have a motion on the floor regarding the driveway?
I move to approve it with staff conditions.
Thank you, Holly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, discussion on the ribbon driveway.
I'd like to ask the applicant, can you share with me the difference between this application on the driveway and the previous one at DRC?
Yes. So the biggest difference between the two is that we've added that strip of grass that kind of comes down between the two garage doors that was not originally there. It was all gravel at that, or all driveway at that point. We've also tried to shrink it in just a little to minimize it as much as we could. The owner's preference would be to maintain the existing drive that's kind of already at the house just from a flexibility standpoint. So that's really the biggest change is we've tried to make it seem less of just completely paving between the two buildings. So we're trying to, you know, have that green in between. We've added, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. You've just minimized your amount of concrete.
We have. And we added stones for the sidewalk instead of it being a paved sidewalk around to the side of the building, to the door, just to kind of make it feel a little more natural, less manufactured.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? You ready to vote? All right. So all in favor of, of approving the driveway with staff comments, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
And those who are opposed? The ayes have it. Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
So staff, are there any other business to discuss or, or, or staff reminders to the commission?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. So we are ready to adjourn. Do I have an emotion, a motion from the board? We all have an emotion when it comes to adjurting, don't we?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. So you can, you can say aye, best standing, so.
Thank you.
All in favor? Well, they, that's it standing. Well, I know you stood in spirit. I could, I could see it.